I am your excellency, distinguished guest, ladies and gentlemen. It is my distinct pleasure as the chairman of Nigerian Community Scotland to once again welcome on behalf of our community, the Nigerian acting High Commissioner to the United Kingdom, your excellency Apasodho Olokunle Akindele Bamboche, Consular Head, Prince Adeney, Chancery Head, Mr. Yunusar, delegates of the High Commission, Chairman Kanuk, Mr. Rabatululoye, my chair in chair. Kanuk executives are members of the Nigerian community from across the United Kingdom to this second edition of the town hall meeting in Scotland, organized by Nigerian Community Scotland in conjunction with Kanuk. First and foremost, I would like to thank everyone in this hall for allocating time in their business schedule to attend this function, and all those involved in organizing this event. From the bottom of my heart, thank you very much. I use this opportunity to acknowledge and commend the presence among us of all sister's organizations that have faithfully attended all our deliberations and accepted our invitation every year. Certainly, your presence is a mark of support and a real sign of encouragement and motivation for us. Finally, I would like to express my gratitude to the members of the local organizing committee who have left no stone unturned to ensure that this meeting is a great success. Thank you all. Our association rolling, our vision of establishing a concrete structure and framework is gradually moving towards realization. We have been working on expanding our membership base, and we are endlessly pursuing the acquisition of our resource center. A point of contact where we can all go for information, support, interaction, the seed we planted a year ago is gradually germinating into the tree we book for. It is a long, winding road, but with us all working together, we will steadily navigate it to our promised land. The High Commission has proposed an initiative aim at the reorganization of Kanuk in a bid to establish a broader outreach of all Nigerians across the length and breadth of the United Kingdom. The various Nigerian associations will be able to plug into Kanuk within their region through these half-isier speedy and the more direct channel of communication with the High Commission. This is not a bid to write or take our control of our community bodies, but to create a better and stronger platform which will enable us hypothetically achieve our common goal for every Nigerian domicile in the United Kingdom. We have faked into this and are working closely with everyone concerned to make this project a successful one, and implore all Nigerian associations present here today to join in and let us work together to achieve this. I would also like to take this opportunity to commend the High Commission on the passport data capture exercise that was carried out in Aberdeen. The Commission provided a service which Nigerians across the Scottish household have learned for over many years, and we cannot convey enough our appreciation of the exercise. Thank you very much. I only I, on behalf of the Nigerian people living in Glasgow and its environment, appeal to your excellency, Mr. High Commissioner, and the Commission executives to accord us this service here in Glasgow with a view to establishing a system whereby this will be a regular, timely event to the benefit of us all. You will appreciate the chance to work our modities with the High Commission towards the achievement of this. Once again, I would like to thank everyone for our sacrifice. Your efforts are very much appreciated. Keep the faith that you are committed to a most noble cause, the well-being of people, some of whom you know and some whom you do not know. Together, we all make the community, and together we build our community. Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot, Mr. Chairman.
Let me start by recognizing the chairman of the Nigerian community in Scotland, Mr. Dismen. My colleagues from the High Commission, the head of Consular Education and Warfare Section Commission, the head of Administration, Mr. Ahmed Yunusar. Of course, I'm sure you know he has been here before me, I mean before me, so I'm sure you have been interacting before, I mean with you. Prince Adeney is the head of the Consular Economic, I mean Consular Education and Warfare Section of the Mission. And of course, also, we have Mrs. Fulaki Abrazak, who is the Deputy Head of Trade, Industry, Trade and Investment Section of the Mission. Of course, also, we have the Senator Consular, the Consular Education and Warfare Section of the Mission, Mr. Ayem. Chairman of Kanuk, ladies and gentlemen. It is indeed a great honor, truly, and a great honor for me to be here this evening. And I'm not going to take your time, because in the program you can see questions and answers. So both of the things I will have said, perhaps, will wait at that time, so that you now direct the program terms of the questions you will ask, because I will know the areas we will touch. But on my way here, I engaged the chairman and I asked him some questions. One, how many Nigerians do we have in Scotland? He mentioned, I think, about over 3,000 Nigerians. And then, of course, he's also told me that the association, the Nigerian community itself, was born, I think, last year. And I asked them, you are the chairman, what is the tenure of the chairman of the mission? He told me two years, which I feel is too short. If you have an organization that you are just starting, then the executive will serve for two years. To me, it's too short for you to have for the organization to really have the table. And I think the essence of the community here is to one mobilize Nigerians here. So I think maybe I'm not campaigning for him. I'm not campaigning for him. But whatever you put there, I think, at least for now, there is need for continuity for the organization to be established. Then, of course, later, maybe you want to do what you want to do. But let me just say, because I also asked them, why would I want to, if I'm Nigerian and then I'm living in Scotland, and you're having this cafe, why would I want to come? If I'm going to spend five pounds to take a train from where I'm living to come here, why will I have to spend my five pounds to come here? You have to justify it. And that is where the community, if you really want to mobilize Nigerians, that is a challenge you have. Why would they care? What is the need for them? That is question you want to ask. If you want to put your money, if you want to spend your time, if you want to spend your money, you ask yourself, why would I even want to go there? Is it really worth it? And that is the challenge. And I've told them some things. One, you have to, Nigerians have to see that there is an advantage in joining or being a member of that the community, of Nigerian community here. I don't know the programs you are going to do, I don't know what you're going to do, but one thing we're going to do, from what I've seen here, if you have about 800,000, of course, we're talking about Scotland, so there may be some Nigerians in Endibo and other parts of the Scotland who may not be able to come here today. We recognize that. But as a mission, what we are going to do is today, we're going to take the names of everybody here. And of course, if there is anything you want to, the mission will give you privacy, will give you priority above others who are in Scotland who are not here today. So if we do not, we'll make sure, Mr. Ayem, we'll make sure we have the list of those who are here today, so that the list is not padded by friends who are not here. So if we, if we come for instance for passport capturing, and somebody has been on the queue for three hours, and then we are a member, you've been here today, if you're coming, we'll attend to you first, before somebody, before somebody who is just coming in. Of course, we can, we can do that, just to make sure the quantity of Nigerians join. And another thing is this, one, if I see that in the program you also have a tribute to somebody who is just lost, so you have to look at ways by which you have to, you can mobilize Nigerians to be members of the Nigerian community. Either you do programs, because usually Nigerians when they come here, they have problem of immigration, problem of housing, so the committee, I mean the community, I mean the association has to make itself useful in terms of advising Nigerians on how to go about, if you, if you have immigration, maybe getting your papers, in the problem of getting work, of housing. If you, if we make ourselves useful to Nigerians, then Nigerians will want to be members of the association. Otherwise, if we are not useful, if we just sit down and do nothing, and then, every year, we say, well, what will make, nobody will come, because we have not made any impact. Our impact have not been felt, and it's quite likely so, if you do not do anything, you just sit down, and then we expect Nigerians to come together, you will come, and they will question the national, I mean, they, 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 they need for you whether it's really worth your time and money to be. And so, I think, Mr. Smeen, that is a challenge that you, you have, so that next time when we come here from the mission, I mean, this hall, I wish, what we want to use, will be, will be full. And one thing I told him is this, another thing is this, register Nigerians, give them ID cards, maybe one pound, two pounds, you understand what I'm saying? And once they come to Nigerian High Commission, anything, and they present that, we say, well, yeah, we, we know you. Because in some countries where, I mean, the last place I sat, every Nigerian in that country has a file. Everything you do is documented, so when you come, the first thing we ask you for your name, and then, of course, we pull out your files, so you know, but here, where we have about 2 million, we do not have the space where you can keep 2 million files. So that is why your community, who is closest to you, maybe association, of course, can also help to document, and that is by, also, by that, we are also assisting the mission to really help to, to assist you. So I wouldn't take more, because I would rather wait for the time and the question and answer, so when you ask, I may ask more questions, then I may be, you may be really with my colleagues and be in a better state, we really answer your, all your questions. But I want to thank you for those of you who are here today for finding time, and then, of course, spending your money, I'm sure maybe some of you might have taken trains or whatever to be here to listen, so really, really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. It's now time for questions and answers.
My question is, just go straight to the question.
Please start identifying yourself.
Sorry, sorry. My name is Sunday Ilawo Ke, I'm a data analyst, and I live here in Glasgow, I'm from Anabra State. My question is, this, one of the challenges we have here in Scotland concerning, anytime I want to do anything with the Consular Office here in UK, having a prolonged distance, you already know how long it took you to come here, even if it's by flight or by a train, and sometimes, the little challenge, the mentioning we have is that things as simple as trying to get information with the embassy without having to go all, all the way to London by phone, we can't, most African will stay quite a long time trying to get the embassy by phone for many hours and don't get anywhere with it. So there are concerns for us here in Glasgow. Then number two is that, a lot of times, I've, I've had a few people saying things like, we, as of trying to get a new passport, a new visa, passport, and all that, they, is there really any reason for us to have to go to London to renew a passport, given the distance this place is to London? So these are two challenges, communication, is there any way to help us in terms of, if it's not too essential that we have to go to London, we should be able to have that done online or by phone as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Number two.
I'm from Glasgow, and I'm from Anabra State. I think in addition to the questions that they have just asked, my addition to that is the current issue with the BVA registration, etc., that is going on. A lot of us here have accounted Nigerian, and I'm sure your excellency can appreciate the distance and the challenges that you go through if you have to go on a walking deep from here, leave work, to go to London to register or do any of such activities, including everyone else's attention. For such organization, and I think this is why the yearning for an office here in Scotland is quite relevant, and this something that we have to, especially with the efforts in Nigerian community Scotland is making now to create a secret area here in Glasgow. Thank you.
Thank you. Number three.
I'm a bishop of Church of Gales Scotland, and the General Secretary for Minority, Ethic, Christians, together in Scotland, make this, originally from Nigeria State. Your Excellency, I would like, I was going to ask two or three questions, but the first one I'll be taking care of, so there is no contributing that. My second question now, okay, sorry, I was going to also, pardon the name, that Mr. Lloy as the new can chairman, and to commend the immediate past executive for a job well done, when the election, I've been following it keenly, and it shows that something good has come out of Nigerian body politic. So, well, my question, sir, is regarding the socio-political sister Baku. As diaspora Nigerians, we have been victims in a sense of the mess in our body politic. But as things stand, it seems to be a new season in Nigeria politically. How can we be part or benefit from the new political climate that is taking place in Nigeria? How can we reflect here, not just Baku? How can we feel it open and forward? Thank you.
So.
Sir, I can't remember the name of the first person, but I think we're all Nigerians here. Mr. Sunday, okay, we are all Nigerians, so there's no point saying, I'm from Anabra, I'm from Bubu, I'm from Nigeria. Just mention your name, we got it. So the, the first one you said about information, the one Nigeria has, I mean, our mission, the mission has a website, so and there's any information you want, either on Consular, the economic, trade, and investment, it's very useful, we're updating it, we'll put anything that happens in the mission, we upload, and that's one thing we do. And I think before, about two or three weeks, I think, about two or three weeks ago, I think the call center, we have a place in the mission, in the initial section, we have a call center, so all calls to the mission are answered by people who are in the call section. Hitherto, we had a problem in that those who are supposed to be there complement other parts of the section, so that they only stay there for quite a while, they work in other areas of the section, and then, of course, come back later. But now, we have people who are permanently there, so that if you call a mission at any, at any particular point in time, there are people who will answer you and, of course, direct you on what to do. So I think that was started about two, three weeks ago. So if you call now, Monday to Friday, there are people who will direct you, direct to the section, who will attend to you, tell you what to do if you want guidance or any something. Then we talk of passport renewal distance from Scotland to London, but one thing is unfortunate, but you know, there is nothing we can do about, but it's unfortunate, Nigeria used to have a consulate in, I think, in Liverpool, Endibo, and of course, in Manchester. But maybe because of the financial situation, government has, and they still have properties in those cities, so, but maybe because of financial constraint, government has really reduced the number of the consulates we have, and those three cities were affected. But the efforts are still on to make sure, at least to have these consulates, so that they can serve Nigerians in the whole of UK. So as of now, we have pressure. London is the only, I mean, the center that services, you know, virtually the whole of UK, so there's quite a lot of pressure. And the thing is this, you know, in my first intervention, I said, assuming today is Saturday, and we are sent our immigration official, I mean, officials to this place, I'm not sure we have to 50 now, so they will have come here, they will have captured 50 people, and then they will have gone back. So if you do the economics, it doesn't really make it, it's not worth it. You understand what I'm saying? I think sometime ago, Manchester also, Nigerians in Manchester also made the same, this thing, they made a lot of noise, and then they say, okay, before my commission, I said, why? Move about six people, officers, senior officers who were supposed to be in London, attending to other people went, and they captured less than 100. It doesn't, I mean, it's not worth it. So you, you do not only look, and this officer has, apart from the train flight, they are smooth, they have to, they have to stay in return, they have to keep. So these are the things. So if, for instance, here, you gather yourself and say, okay, look, Actia Commissioner, we have about 250, 300 Nigerians that are ready, and of course, we send people, but we cannot send people from about four hours by, about four and a half hour by train to come here to capture 50 people. We won't do that. So I think the, the emphasis is on you, for you to really mobilize yourself, and when you reach a reasonable number, then, of course, you can then tell us that, okay, look, we are 300 that are ready to be captured, and of course, then we send, we send the immigration officers here to come and capture, but we cannot send that team, come and capture 10 people, 20 people. I don't think we have that capacity to do that, or the capacity to do that. Mr. Kume Chi Mezze, you talked about BVA, the issue of having your bank account is private. Government has nothing to do with it, and if, what we are talking about in London is a private affair, we have nothing to do with it. And I know, I think, Echo Bank.
I can, I can help you, I can, I can help you.
Echo Bank came, what we did for there was to give them the facility to use our hall for some days, so that Nigerians can come there and do it. But where, the federal government and the mission were not involved, the issue of BVA, it's a private something, whether go to Nigeria and do it, but that is the thing. You are complaining of going to London. The other option is to go travel to Nigeria. So I think it's better if you find it, I mean, live time, and go to London and do it and come back, you're still there, and I think today is October 31st. So I think, and the way you do it, the ORS that does it is a private concern, that's nothing to do with the government, so you pay 30 pounds, and of course, then you do your BVA, unless you have a card with GTB, and I think first one, some banks that have offices in London. But just for clear, I mean, just to clear why, the mission has nothing to do with it. They don't have anything, it's a private enterprise, so. Mr. Francis Alau, you talked about socio-political system. Of course, you know, like, I believe, and the VP was here, and I think he left today, and I told him, in Nigeria, as of today, we have two tendencies. The first tendency has been in government for 16 years, now we have maybe the other tendency. If this other tendency, the president and social first in Nigeria, then they have no hope. But from my engagement with him, I think we have hopes, and I told him, Nigerians have great expectations, that, I mean, hitherto, you can say, well, things could have been better if this party had won. Well, things could have been better if this man had won. Now, all those things are now in place, so we do not have, they do not have any reason not to really meet the expectations and yearnings of Nigerians. And I think, from what I've seen, I think they are trapped, so what they need from us is just our own support, and I think we should, we should give that. Of course, the socio-political, socio-political, I mean, situation in Nigeria, you know, things have improved, the security situation in the northeast has improved, I mean, the president has been able to mobilize regional support in terms of our neighboring countries to support, to indicate attacking the problem of, addressing the problem of Boko Haram. We also want to know that travel to France, to attend the G7 meeting, has been to the US, has been to France. All these developed countries are really sure, have indicated their interest to really help Nigeria to overcome the problem. Of course, the issue of corruption, I'm sure you also know, that even one of the leaders, now the number three citizen in the country now is, so there is like, there is no, no secret car. If you run far off the ball, now, you, you, you have your day in court, and of course, the court can then pronounce you, whether can discharge and acquit you or fund you. But I think things are really improving Nigeria, and like I told you too, for diplomats serving the country, you are not on the defensive again, you are not, you are not really, when you are saying, well, in Nigeria there is corruption, and then you are on the defensive. But now, you can raise your head eye because of what is happening in the country, and most international leaders are now ready to really engage with the president, which I think is the good thing for us, where we, because you can only sell a good product, you cannot sell a bad product. So Nigeria today is a good product, and so, even when you engage with any other person, any other African countries, I mean, citizens of other African countries, I think you will be able to stand tall. There are things that change for the better in Nigeria. And then you said, things are going on, what can we benefit? I would rather, I would rather put the question to you, what can you do for our country? You are here, you are in the diaspora, you have the expertise, you have the experience, and that is kind of what we want in Nigeria. Let me, there is one good story I always tell, and that is the, the chairman of the Nido South, Mrs. Evyeta Abraham, yes? In Nigeria today, we have the Freedom of Information Act, and that thing started from her. She's, she came out, she's, she saw the idea to the government officials who visited London at that time, they keyed into it, they invited her to Nigeria, she drafted it, and today is an act, I mean, it's a bill, I mean, it's a law in Nigeria, so we can do that. If she had been looking at what can she benefit from Nigeria, we don't have that today. So because of the exposure, because of the expertise you have, because of the capacity you have, I think it should be, the challenge should be, what, in what capacity, in what way can I really do contribute by all culture to national development? I think it's better if we think a lot online, rather than what our country can do for us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have.
Close the gap. I would like to say thank you to the acting High Commissioner, Vice Minister. Thank you for coming and taking the time to wait for Nigerians, because one of the comments I have is the fact that Nigerians have to operate on, Nigerians are operating on African time, as we said. I think one of the officials after they said, he doesn't understand why we do that, and to you, Nigerians, I think he's definitely changing that. All right. My question is, when I was growing up, I drove the ministry in Nigeria, where it's responsible for orienting people, imagine how we become Africans, and growing up, that ministry seems not for this. In my mind, I keep on thinking, the way, the way that ministry, who gave the people, being, being. they are, they are, they drain out the T E, is this ministry being existed? If they are existing, what actually are they doing? And if they are not existing, with the acting high commissioner, help us lose its influential position to get the current president, to get the ministry to move. If they are existing, then they should be made to help do what they used to do there. Because then Nigerians, Nigerians learn from what Noah put on TV, on radio, they were kind of a driver for, that creates a road for the Nigerians to follow. Because I believe this is a great foresight, this is about time Noah could help with that. And finally, everybody, the BBN issue, I believe from Nigeria government has something to do with it. And no disrespect to you, sir. Um, the fact is, I, I went to London to do BBN and I paid thirty pounds. And I was looking at it, that's been paying a fund that will give my money to do their job. I believe directives should come from the government. So see, yes, we are not involved in it, in the, in the hand of it. But we want to do to make it free to Nigerians wherever they may be. It does not cost Nigerian government to save that to the banks. And it does not come in bank, a huge amount to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, sorry, who are the people that risked their hands? Let's just take numbers so that we don't have confusions. So.
Nigeria to UK, members of the higher table and all other protocols duly observed. Kalista Okwoma speaking. Um, basically, um, the major thing I want to talk about here is about some of us that have studied here and were able to secure, like what we call scholarship, you know, for further studies. Like someone like me, I did get two, I was shortlisted for two scholarships. Um, that's NDDC and PTDF. Um, after all the rigorous processes involved, one particular thing stopped me from, you know, getting to the promised land, like actually getting, you know, the award itself. And that was taking the test. Normally, what I observed and what I understand in the past, what the commission, you know, Nigeria embassy to the UK would normally do is to establish, like the education now, it goes to the education department of it. They would want to arrange a program or, you know, where people that have secured or were shortlisted for, you know, for a particular scholarship, for them to come in if it's for us to travel to London to write, you know, the test, you know, there's a provision like that. But at the moment, that provision is not functioning. I, I would say it has secured zero attendance. Because I know I did ring several times to know if there was anything of sorts, you know, to see that some of us that got that opportunity were able to skate through, but there was nothing to that effect. Secondly, um, I, I can confirm, I heard something that, sorry, I'm saying this, the vice president actually said. And I can understand that, you know, some of us, we, you know, in the higher table, we know about the vice president. And like he said, he was with him, maybe here in the UK or some other place. And he talked about the youths not being involved, you know, in the cabinet that was created. Um, the question is, and what I have to, you know, where I stand in this is, if the higher commissioner, you know, the embassy would find a possibility or a way to get the youths involved, mostly them in the UK, to get them involved in the programs, you know, that Nigeria would do, to create an avenue, a statistical documentation of what, you know, our professionalities are, what we've gained so far, what we know, what we can do for the government. Because if the statistics is not there, probably we would not get or know about this. So this is very quite irrelevant, because, you know, we having these ideas is for the betterment of Nigeria. And if we're not taken to the higher level, then the idea could probably just, you know, die with us. So we need to look into some of this angle. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You see, I met with the gentleman that is doing it in London. The OIS man, online integrated service. He will be CEO. Came to my office, we spoke about it. I was trying to actually make him reduce the cost, which is thirty pounds that you're paying. But he made me realize that he paid some money to buy the equipment. So he's a businessman. He doesn't work for any government. And like the His Excellency I just mentioned, there are a lot of things that we're expecting the mission to be doing, but they don't have power to do it. So you need to understand that not, they can't do everything. So we need to understand what they can do, what they can't do. A lot of people, in fact, some Nigerians came to my office, they came to complain about the BBN. And I told them, look, there is nothing anybody can do about that. Talk to your banks. And I can assure you now, if you go to your banks, they are doing it now. You just need to phone them and they will tell you where to go to. GTB is doing something at the moment, you can speak with them. So gentlemen, I would advise you to speak to your bank. Another thing that I'm doing with your chairman, the Echo Bank staff, they came sometime about a month ago, no, about three. Up to, they were around till up to last week, but they came to my office, we sat down. And the challenge, one of the challenges that they were facing initially was you need, you would have to open an account with them. If you haven't got any account with Echo Bank, they wouldn't do it. But right now, what they're thinking of doing is to actually do it for people that they don't have an account with them. So if you have your own account with GTB, they can actually help you to do the BBN. But they have not, I don't think they've authorized them now. So they've gone back home, when they come back, they're going to do that. When they were around, they met with your chairman and they actually promised that when they come back, they will come over to Scotland to come and do it for you guys. So I don't know whether they will come back this coming week, whether it will be too late, whether it's going to be extended. Better you can meet up with the deadline, but please check with your banks, okay? Thank you very much.
Sorry about that. To support what you're saying, Echo Bank is in Aberdeen today and tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, today and tomorrow. So if you must definitely go, then it is possible.
See, I think you've really answered quite a lot of questions. And I think about the spirit. Um, you know, the thing is this, those who are living in Nigeria are more challenged than you. You are better off. So the spirit I'm seeing today is the spirit of, they should do it for us. And I think that spirit is what makes businessmen even prosperous. Take up the challenge and do what I think you need to do. Let me just go to the questions. Uh, I can't remember the name again, please. Ah, Ushala Baduru. Passport, in your case, you are not even, you are not even going online.
My problem is, I want to get a new passport. I've got a problem with my bank and I can't do, I can't do it with my own card online. So what I'm requesting for is that if there's a way I can be allowed to get, to do the money of anything to make my payments, or if I can.
No, no, you can see that. You know, in the mission, you know, this platform where you pay, the money you pay doesn't go to the mission. The money you pay, either for passport or visa, goes to the federal, I mean, the federal government account in, in New York. So we do not, that's why if you, if you make a mistake in payment, there is no, we cannot refund you because we don't have access to what you pay. So there is a facility in the mission that if you come, if you cannot access, you give them your money, then they do it for you and then of course then, so it's not a problem. And I see you are hungry, you know? Yeah, you don't need to be, you don't need to be, you don't need to be angry about this thing. And then of course, as I was saying, I truly have the challenge, because you're saying, I spoke out of experience of what has happened in the mission, in part, in part, where people, communities who say, no, we are ready, we are ready, and then we go. And then of course, we commit one personnel and everything and then the number of people that are registered, you question why they do even go there. You understand what I'm saying? So we are talking of the whole of Scotland. I don't think it's difficult for you if your chairman can even give you, because I don't, I don't want to be tied to a date. You know, that, okay, I'm going, I'm going to come November fifteen, that we'll make two fif, unless you also tell me that if we give you a date today, if you are not up to that, that thing, then we won't come again. Because the thing is this, I think it's from experience, you understand what I'm saying? It's very easy to say, because maybe you want your passport and plus your three children, you are making four, but it's still a fat cry. We can't come here because of small, I mean, such a small number. That's just the thing. In Manchester, I think we were in Manchester last week, and the same thing, and then I told him, look, if you have two fifty to three hundred, be sure, even if it's next week, I'm going to send the people here, and they will capture you. But if we are not sure of the number, I don't think it's, to us, it's not, because we are going to, every day in London, we are, we are ten to one, or sixty. Every day, Monday to Friday, one sixty. So if we move, even if we move them here on Friday, you can imagine the number of people that would be denied. That's one sixty. And then we come here, we only capture fifty. So I think that's the way I want you to understand it. But the other one, if you come, it's no problem, if you cannot pay, we have a facility where you bring your cash, that's done for you and then of course you can.
Leave your details within.
No, leave it within your name. And then anytime you are coming, let him know. And we will give you that privilege. And then somebody mentions a story about seven years ago, I think, I can't remember the name again. Yes, you mentioned something that happened seven years ago.
No, I said, the woman with three kids.
Where was that?
It happened just last, the general issue.
But I understand, okay, okay. But let me tell you one thing. A Nigerian lady who even worked with the mission. About when Kolladi was there, was social secretary, called me about, I think last week or two weeks. Our son was getting married in the US and she needed to go, she attended the interview, she left her passport for the visa. And then they told her, okay, maybe wait for five, three days, about since August. Up till now, she has not been able to get the visa. Why? The passport was misplaced. So what am I saying? When you are dealing with a large number of people, mistakes happen. And that is not, no, let me, that is not, is not something that is a everyday occurrence. You understand what I'm saying? So if you attend to one sixty people, it could be more. There are times people do not have appointments, still come and then we still attend to them. So if you attend to one sixty people every day, multiply that by five. So the, and then at times also, because the server we use is linked to Abuja, the approval to issue you passport is not from the mission, it's from Abuja. So that is why you cannot have two passports, two valid passports. If you apply for passport here, fill your data in the system. But the data in Abuja, the main one, can reject if you still have a valid passport. So that is the, at five o'clock, I was going home, then I left the office and then I saw one woman, Nigerian woman, she was making us, abusing everybody, she abused the immigration officers there, she abused everybody. So as I was going, somebody told her, look, that's the deputy high commissioner. So she now came to me and listened to her case. And all the security people she had already abused, they were out there. You know, but when we listen to the two sides, and now told her, and then she apologized. And what, because they already made the decision that because she was unruly and she abused, the immigration officer was to attend to her case, they already decided that they were not, they were not going to attend to her case. So she had to make her to apologize. And then the following day, they asked her to come to apologize to the immigration officer. Because you know, the fact that we are public officials does not mean that we are dustbin, that just abuse us in the house. You know, I think respect begets respect. If you go somewhere, maybe the child was unruly disturbing everybody. I said, Ma, I mean, please, why don't you just make sure that you control that? That could have been it. So obviously, you are saying, it's hearsay, but I don't believe that. The officers we have in immigration are very professional. And these are immigration, top immigration officers from Nigeria. So they are very, very professional. But at times, some things we cannot do in the American embassy, some things we cannot do in other embassies, we want to do it in Nigeria. Switch off of what becomes a problem. But whereas if you go to the US embassy, they just switch off of everybody or all of them. So I think we should just respect ourselves, respect our Nigerian officials, you could be there, I mean, you could be there, it could be you. So something you cannot take, don't just give it to others. I think that's just, and it's not, you can, I mean, I'm sure it's not something you hear every day. The Nigerian immigration section is something, is top class, let me put it that way. Other countries come to see how we do things there. It's not easy to attend to the number of people we attend to in that place every day. Uh, Mister Oyede James. Oyede James, passport. You talked, you talked about passports.
I was talking about that if you can have sort of a.
No, we found that one. I've thrown, I mean, I've thrown the challenge back to you. And then Mister Attilo, you're talking of pro bono. You are not trained. So do what? Which one, which area of the immigration list do you think you can key into? Oh, that is official. So you can go to any embassy and say, you stand by their computer. You, you, you know what I'm saying? You go to any embassy and then you say, because you are, even you may be an expert, you may be an expert. But no country will give you access. No, I mean, it's done, you shouldn't even be thinking of that. You can't go to any mission and say, please go and bring your file. No, what I'm saying is, if we engage you like OIS is engaged, of course, they have the contract with the federal government. No, it won't even work. Let me, let me tell you, let me tell you one thing, let me tell you one thing. You know, when I arrived there last September, when I wanted to get my visa, before, just go online, you fill the form and then of course you send your passport, I don't go for interview, but you send your passport. This time around, you have to have a code before you can even go online to fill. And before you get that code, you have to pay ten thousand naira. That is not even to the British government, because the British high commissioner will tell you, they don't have anything to do with visa. So the OIS also was to assist in one screening. Of course, they entered into agreement with the Nigerian Immigration Service, Ministry of Material. We have to be, but for them, I don't think they will allow any company, not contract with them, to just come in and say, because you have the expertise, I don't think that, that is unacceptable. So we shouldn't even go there, we shouldn't even discuss it. You understand what I'm saying? And then Mike, you talked about the fact that you have expertise in many areas. We quite appreciate that and we know. And then Mike, you talked about the fact that you have expertise in many areas, we quite appreciate that and we know that there are quite a lot of Nigerians here and elsewhere that have expertise and capacity. But you are looking at the plateau, I don't know whether you're a member of Nido North, are you a member? Because you know, the Nido people, and I think the chairman of Kanuk was also there, he went to Nigeria.
He's a Nido member.
Who?
No, the other guy, Chimise.
Hey, you should ask, and you are keeping quiet. You should have explained to him now. There's a platform.
I think, yes, I think, yes, I'm a Nido official, for Nido UK Not. I think what people are saying, and it's not just the platform as an organization, but actually, these organizations to start creating, Nido UK Not, inclusive, Kanuk, inclusive, Nigerian Community Scotland, inclusive. To start creating the platforms for people to really engage and sell their ideas. There was something, for two, three years running now, Cher had been running on engagements in Aberdeen with Nido UK Not. And those are the kind of engagements where people can sell their skills to the top party organizations, and the High Commission had always been involved in those engagements, because they've always been there. So I think that's what he's saying, and that's why he was channeling it to the Kanuk chairman, not you. Because the challenge is for organizations, including Nido, UK Not, and Kanuk, to actually begin to do more for the people, create those opportunities for them to become members and to actually engage.
So I, I just want to help you on that.
For me, Dr. Popola, I work at Nigeria College, and the way I've supported that, many professional, have the professional bodies, and that's what they for. There's no way Kanuk chairman will be able to market woman, come and say your thing, electricity, no, you cannot do that. You have to go through your, the presentation you gave today was fantastic. If you can publish that in your professional journal, people will know what you can do, and that's what they're talking to us. I used to say, I've got a group of Chinese engineer coming to see me next week. And what they're gonna do, they're gonna have me for a day, and I've just told the chairman, how much they're gonna pay me for a day, or ask, because I've published about what they want. So I can't say the High Commission helped me on that. When you publish yourself to your professional bodies, Nigeria will become round, start chasing you, ah, that man is an expert on data analysis, he's a Nigerian, we want him. You go into London Transport, now the cross-rail of the, of great on London Transport, can you guess who is the biggest enemy for forty billion project in London Transport? He's a Nigerian, tell me about Busso. I've been doing my best to try and get his man, even a part of his brain, and take it to Nigeria. The prince gonna, who let me? So that's what you need to do, yeah? Don't rely on these guys, they've gone enough.
I think we've been able to, naturally, I applaud, and I would, yes, naturally, I applaud, and naturally, I don't deceive people. I will not tell you, I promise you, what we do, and then tomorrow, say, you don't mind that, boy, say, don't tell you, go and tell you what to, I would rather tell you, it may not be palatable, but I won't deceive you. And that's what I've tried to do, deceive you. Thank you. All right, thank you a lot, Eddie. Uh, right now. Sorry. Um, gentlemen.
We really need to.
Gentlemen, you say you're in London, right? Okay, there is something that we just put up in Kanuk, is think tank committee. And because of the way you have spoken, I want you to rebuttal it, okay? And the other gentleman that was here, has he gone? Okay, when last were you in Nigerian High Commission, when last were? You've never been there, okay, good. How about the gentleman that spoke over there, when last were you there? Yes.
Honestly, I haven't.
Hold on, let me, let me talk, I understand.
Excuse me, if I, if I, if you say there's discipline in the embassies in Nigeria, we, it's not true.
Wait, 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 wait. You know, you know the reason, hold on, gentlemen, gentlemen, this will help you, both of you, this will help you. You know what, you know what, you know what, I will help both of you. You are coming to London, and when you get to London, I want to hear your experience. Do you know what is happening there now? We should all stand up and give them a round of applause. That place is totally changed. Hold on, hold on, hold on, let me help you, let me help you, okay, let me help you, another thing I'm gonna say to you. You see, I'm not just saying this because that woman is there, Mrs. Abra Zak. I'm not just saying, I just want to tell you exactly what happened. There is nobody that I sent to her, she's in investment, trade and investment, she used to be in immigration, there is nobody I've sent to her. She would leave her job, wherever she is, she would go downstairs, go and meet, you know, because you have not been there, there is a banking hall, she would go and meet whoever they have sent to her, and she would sort out the problem. There's one she did yesterday, I was with her in her office, and somebody called me right in Fortover, and the person told me what the problem, the problem he was facing. I gave the phone to her and she sorted it out immediately. I'm telling you, if you call and you speak to any of the ministers, they don't joke with helping, they will help immediately. And if you, you know what, let me tell you something, if there's a problem, if you have any challenge, I will give you a number, you give me a call, and I'll tell you, listen to me, listen to me, I'll tell you, if you go there yourself, yourself, you will not spend more than twenty minutes, everything will be sorted out, I can bet you. No, 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 it's not because I know her. No, 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 no. So I'm just giving you confidence, I'm just giving you confidence, everything is changed, go and experience it, okay? Thank you.
Because, because of the support of what you say.
Yes.
That is the truth.
Oh, thank you.
Because I have some member of my job that.
Good. Thank you.
Good afternoon, good afternoon. Hold on, hold on, hold on, please. In support of that, this is Mr. Emeka, that was the day you called me, he said he needs an assistant in the Nigerian High Commission. I gave him the number of this man, sorry to use that man, Mr. Enya. Now, after that, he himself has already given the number to somebody else, to somebody else, and he has helped him all. We were together the day before yesterday at night, we were talking, and now remember that, I've already given the number of this guy to this guy, and I said, do you know him? He said, no, this is the man I gave the number to the last time. I was saying, it's you, and I greeted him, hello, hello, of us, we are happy together, I said, oh, I gave the number of the old woman to you again, he said, I don't know, but I've helped the person. So that is that. Again, regarding the issue of the passport, it seems as if all of us are now attacking the High Commission, High Commission. Now, the town hall meeting we are having today, we've sent out the flyer, everything to Beaufort, we are having dinner party at night, they did not turn up, they did not turn up for the town hall meeting, but they want to come for the party. Which one, which one is more important, the town hall meeting, to liaise with our High Commissioner, to know what is going on, to hear the latest information, but they want the party. Now, the High Commissioner has promised us that if we have the numbers, if it is next week, we have two hundred and, two or three hundred people, he will send out the expertise. And I want to use the position I have today, probably to see Mr. Chimise and Pastor Alau, and probably Mr. Imos, Pastor Imos, and myself. If we can start liaising with people and get the names, the phone number and email address, if it is up to two or three hundred the High Commissioner requested for, let us compile it and I will send it to them, and they will give us date for the passport renewal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, sorry, Chairman, before you exit, High Commissioner, I met with students yesterday, and we are the proof of the differences. As far as the passport is concerned, and for those of you that carry British passport, you actually do not need to know anybody in the mission. So you don't need to call Enya. If you follow two persons, the problem with Nigeria is that they want to travel on Sunday. On Thursday, they start looking for somebody, do you know somebody there? If you do the thing the way we want it, you will get your passport without knowing anybody. You know the population of Nigerians in United Kingdom, and come to the mission any morning, you see people queue up, they don't need to know anybody, they get their passports though. But you are an armchair critic, you stay in one place and be looking for excuses, they said this, this, it's not possible, that place has been reformed, no doubt, nothing. So don't give us any bad news, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, thanks, thank you very much. While we are being conscious of time, because we're talking about time factor, you know, we started late, but then we should not exceed. I know, I know. Now, we have something very important to do, and that's by Mr. Emeka. We're gonna be looking to the, to our friend that died, one of our friends and our brother that passed away couple of weeks ago. Now, if we can make this very snappy, please.
Good evening, Acting Commissioner, distinguished gentlemen. I really appreciate all you guys.
Ladies and gentlemen, I believe it's been a very fruitful afternoon. I've been mandated to inform you that the Nigerian High Commission, you know, abdicated by the acting High Commissioner, Ambassador Lukunle Bamboche, will be assisting Nigerian Community Scotland in all your activities. And there's a donation from the High Commission for seven hundred and fifty pounds. This will be handed to the chairman by Mr. Enya at a later stage. So the High Commissioner didn't want to have an elaborate ceremony on that. So we would also like to commiserate with you on the loss of the late Mr. Emeka Mudi. It's obviously a very tragic loss, as he seemed to have been quite young, but we heard he lived a very fruitful life. The High Commission in this regard is donating the sum of two hundred and fifty pounds to assist in repatriating his body. This would also be handled by Mr. Enya, who will liaise with the community regarding the fund disposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Sorry, he's not, Mr. Enya is not going to liaise with the community, when it comes to money, we have to be very careful. This man, who is representing the family of Mr. Emeka, will be given the money by my colleague. And the same area, the chairman of Nigerian community, for the community events, the activities you are doing today and other days, we have to be very clear, we don't want a petition to go to the press.
Thank you very much, sir, and thank you very much, the High Commission, that's a huge amount of money coming our way. Um, also, I think the Nigerian Community Scotland chairman wants to give his own fund.
Uh, Emeka, popularly known as Wineology, has been a very fantastic person. It was very unfortunate when I heard that he was about to die, and I promised that I want to see this guy before he dies. But unfortunately, Sat Nav took me to somewhere else, by the time I go to the hospital, he's already gone. So it's a sad story. Anyway. I will help the family to their pound. Thank you very much. Please, can we get somebody to go around to collect the donation, starting from myself? And I'll pass the mic now to the Kanuk chairman for his own donation as well. And meanwhile, we have the chairman, the president of Nigeria Association in Belfast, probably he may also try and contribute something to that, thank you.
All right, um, sorry, sorry, sorry. Mr. Emeka, since you are the one representing the family, if you don't mind, you just collect donations. Thank you. Um, so while we're on that, Mr. Chairman of Kanuk.
On behalf of the Central Association of Nigerians in the UK, I'll put something, I'll give the gentleman something, and I don't want to mention the amount, or I'll do something, I'll do something, on behalf of all of you, anyway.
Oh, thank you very much.
And another thing before I leave, that gentleman spoke earlier, saw him from the insurance background. You see, if that gentleman had done, had taken up a policy, the kind of money that would have given him would have been a lot, it would have been two hundred thousand pounds, and he would have been paying ten pound or twenty pound a month. So please learn from that, do something, and see that gentleman before he leaves, thank you.
Kanuk is working for all Nigerians in the UK.
Ten Nigerians in the UK. I want to encourage you to be part of the big family, Kanuk, Central Association of Nigerians in the UK. We're here to work for you.